Or vibrate or off please. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. They're moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Agenda approved. Approved last meeting's minutes.
I would most approve last meeting's minutes.
All seconded.
They're moved and seconded to approve last meeting's minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Bills to be paid. Franny?
Yep, there's several of them.
I see that.
Everybody should got an updated one where the margins for the mowing, the cemetery. How many departments over here have a pool permit?
We have to, that pool permit is, is for the new pool house. We have to get a permit to, seems like we have to get them a permit for everything, but this is for them to come in and check to see if we have asbestos. And we're pretty sure that we don't, but you still gotta have it done.
Franny, on this mowing cemetery, is that just the first payment?
Yep.
Yep, that's half of it.
The cemetery will be not paid until what we decide, November or something like that?
If I remember right, it's at least a month after whether it should be done mowing or better.
Okay. That's what I was checking on. Are they comfortable with that? Did that, did they submit that bid?
Yep, they knew that going into it, so.
Tom, Tom talked to me the other day.
Okay.
And uh...
He was happy with getting paid half up front and then the other half?
Yep. He suggested they get paid half and then the other half. He thought that was the way it was worked, so.
Have they mowed it lately?
They mowed it today.
Okay.
He was waiting for it to rain.
It's getting a little shaggy in spots.
But he was waiting for it to rain, Ray.
I won't touch mine either, but...
I said it was brown in spots, but there's some places getting a little shaggy there too. East end and down way down the west end.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills as printed.
Would we pay the bills?
All seconded.
They're moved and seconded to pay the bills as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Bills to be paid. It's been approved. Uh, well water, waste water generator.
At the last meeting, we talked about the rehabilitation of the well and you guys asked a couple more questions that I shouldn't answer. So I called Terry back and talked with him for a while. The disposal of the water. Uh, the wastewater that's gonna come out of the well. Uh, he didn't know, he didn't really have any idea how much there could be. But he said it can't run into a storm sewer where it'll go into a body of water of the state is what they call it. So, you know, him and I talked for a little bit and he didn't know exactly what he was talking about. So he had me call the DNR and I talked to a couple of ladies at the DNR. Uh, they told me that we have to get a permit number six, which is easy to do. You just apply for it, they give it to you. And then, uh, we can run the water through our sanitary system. But if we have too much of this water, then it could kill off our lagoon, so they have to treat it with chlorine, I believe. No, not with chlorine. With something that minimizes the chlorine in the water. And I don't remember what that was. But they also told me that we could contain it in a grassy area, which we have right around the well. So I think, I think, you know, if there's not too much of it, we should be able to contain it right there and let it go into the ground and we should be in good shape. The way it sounds when I have to talk to these two DNR ladies. Now Terry said that he was gonna come up here and look at the situation and let us know a little bit more about the disposal of the water.
Is there a danger of getting chemicals?
Yeah, well.
In the well, yeah. I mean, being just dumping out.
In the other well?
No. Either any other wells we have down there.
Yeah.
If we just contain it right there, I mean, do we have to be beyond 300 feet? Like everybody else does?
Nobody said anything about that.
I know, we never used to. Question, have we got a permit or?
Well, you see, this is new. You didn't have to do this until 2010 sometime, so.
But he's gonna come up and look at it?
Terry's gonna come up and look at the situation and help us out a little bit. Uh, and I'm gonna apply for this permit number six. Got the paperwork to do that.
Is there a cost on that?
No. And then I also talked to Terry about the concerns of the well collapsing. This process not working. And what he said is that's, that's very possible. But what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll, I don't know, I guess for lack of better explaining, take a toothbrush and scrub the casing and then see, you know, what it looks like. If it looks bad, then they probably won't blast it.
They'll just abandon the project?
They'll just say this is probably not gonna work and we'll go from there. We'll see what happens. So, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be a complete loss of $8,000 if there is a hole. I think they'll be able to find it before they before they use the blasting, which is the majority of the money on the bid, so. Um, I'm gonna call Terry next week and get an appointment set up. You know, have him come up the second weekend in September.
Well, you can do that anytime.
What's that?
Scrub it.
Scrub it?
He's gonna, yeah, he's gonna bring guys up one time to scrub it, bring them back up again.
How much water to waste there? How many would you say?
No, he didn't know for sure, you know. It, I guess it's hard to tell.
Really, you used to flush it quite a while after you put the acid in.
Yeah, I know, but you wouldn't have acid on in the first thousand gallons. Something after that, pretty much all the water.
DNR is concerned, it's all contaminated.
See what, yeah, what the DNR said is that they'll clean it, then they'll flush it to see how the pump works. And then they'll do a little more cleaning and flush it again and so, you know, all of that water's gonna be contaminated. You know, if it gets...
You, you was talking about grassy area, wouldn't it be better done by the airport or something like that and we dump it down there?
Well, that was another thing that I asked her is can we contain this in a, in a tank?
Yeah.
Can we use a water tank and contain it and take it to our lagoon? Uh, the first DNR lady that I talked to said, "Yeah, sure, that'd be the best thing to do." The second DNR lady that I talked to said, "No, don't do that, cuz you'll kill your lagoon." So, we better not do that.
But grassy area though, we could, we've got a grass area down here.
Yeah.
We could throw it down that slough down there.
Right.
That'd be better than dumping it right there. Right. And I guess, you know, that's something that we gotta figure out. You know, if he scrubs it and he sees a hole in there, then we're probably not gonna have to worry about it anyway.
Did he said a timeline where he's gonna come up and do this?
He said, "Once I call him to set up the appointment," like I'm gonna call him next week to set it up for the second week in September. And then between this, next week and the second week in September, he'll come up to look at it and see, you know, get a better idea of what he wants to do.
Do you have a tanker available to haul that away, Franny?
Got a couple, three tons of water.
That's just an FYI for you then?
Yeah, I kinda figured that we'd talk to those guys if, if that needs to be done, so.
Any other questions? We have no more discussion and no other questions? Let's move on to the electric transformer. Chris?
You guys asked, Franny, you asked if we could find a 1500 that... Yeah, that wasn't brand new that we didn't have to buy and let sit here. Well, we asked a couple of questions and we found one in Sandborn that they're not using anymore now. Uh, the guy told me that they got it from Mapleton in 92, so it's older. But Mark thought if we could get it bought at the right price, you know, we could have it sitting here.
Has it been reconditioned?
Nope. Uh, well, let's see, it was tested, it was tested in 92, I think it was, he said. Maybe don't have all the, yeah, all the emails here that he sent me, but it was tested in 92. And, uh, I mean, it didn't say it was good or bad then, but these guys don't, don't have electricity anymore. They do it through somebody else and so they're not using this.
How much did they want for it?
Did they ever use it?
Yes. They used it till 2007, I think. What'd you say, Franny?
Sometimes they had it hooked to a generator.
Well, that was one of the things too that, uh, Mark and I talked about is, is these guys gave up on their generation or they don't have the generation anymore, so Mark had me ask about a generator and they'd get a generator sitting there, so. I mean, it's just, you know, we'll see what, he, he was gonna go to his utility board and find out a price on it, Rob. Yes. Both the generator and the transformer. Now, if you look at that first picture there, that, that transformer, that's called a live front. We don't have that. We have dead front in ours. Which means it's an elbow that you can actually grab a hold of and pull off and put on and not get shocked. So we would have to have, do some modification to it. So that would add to the cost of the transformer. So, I mean, you know, we would just have to see what they want for it. I don't know what a good price would be. I mean...
Can you update it to a dead front?
Yes, TNR Electric can do that. Mark checked on that.
So we just gotta find out some costs?
We gotta find out some costs and, you know, go from there.
Probably the cost of transforming it too.
What's that?
Probably wanna get the cost of transferring over to the dead front too, so we can...
Yeah, we're gonna do that. Uh, TNR didn't wanna say anything about it until they, you know, saw it and well, Mark didn't even ask them, I guess, because they didn't know the price of the, of the transformer. If that was too much, then we weren't gonna worry about it.
And find out who's gonna do the transportation? Whether we have to go down and get it or whether they will pay for the transportation up here or?
We probably have to go. Go get it, yeah.
If we're gonna look there, if we're gonna get it refurbished, maybe just go on a bit further and...
Take a DNR and...
Cuz your TNR's in, uh, but...
Uh, it's north of, uh, it's in South Dakota.
It's in South Dakota. Now, uh, Bob Mead called and found that TNR Electric has three to six of these, brand new, sitting in their lot at, at any given time. So if we needed one, you know, we could get it down here. But those are $17,000, so.
Have you seen the cost differences?
Yeah.
By the time we buy this and refurbish it and grab it somewhere?
Yeah, it might have the same amount of stuff.
Might have the same amount of money in it.
Close, yeah.
Who knows?
And they might not want much of it either.
Well, they haven't used it.
How much did he say they'll worth?
He, he didn't say he was gonna go...
No, Bob, no, Bob.
A brand new one is $17,000, right?
Any other questions?
What do you guys think a good price would be? I mean...
I have no idea.
There would be a better idea than any...
Is $5,000 too much?
I would think if we put more than half of $17,000 into it, then we're just throwing money away. I mean, by the time we get it, refurbish it.
Transport it.
And bring it around, if we're spending over half of that, I wouldn't do it.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so either.
If you're new, and was this one like you said is...
Well, it's 20 years old, 27 years old, you know.
But it is about...
I think half, it's too much.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think they'll get rid of it fairly cheap. You know, where are they gonna go with it? What are they gonna do? Just take it off space?
Exactly, that's, and that's what I'm thinking is...
They'll probably kick a pink and get rid of it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, if these pictures were colored, then you'd be able to tell.
It hasn't been used since 2008.
Seven, I think, is what it's in.
Four years. You don't know what it's gonna cost you, dead man that front? You have to ask about TNR Electric? I don't know. I don't know. Any other questions? Street costs, Chris?
Uh, well, we got, we got the street cost from the blacktop guy. You guys can see... You got, I don't even know what you got there.
Well, I got two different ones there.
I think the second one wants the little...
Actually, they're, they're the same thing. If you just look, if you just look at this, if you just look at the second sheet, you look at the, the one in quotes is the cost of asphalt. That's the difference between what this guy, what this guy does is he comes, he comes in and he, he lays a little like a half inch strip of asphalt. Three quarters inch strip of asphalt and then he seal coats over top of it. That way you level out your road and then you seal coat over top of it. That's what they did in South Arthur and in Idagrove. And he said they've been doing it for 20 years. They've had really good luck with it.
And, and that's like the first one, that's $4,000, one third?
That's the half inch and then the seal coat, Ray, yes. That's the top one and then the bottom one is, is strictly...
That's, that's if we tore it up and put, and redid it, did asphalt or whatever?
The second one, the one in quotes is the one where you mill it out and put the asphalt back in, yep.
What's First Avenue West from Melrose? That's just...
That's up by...
Cooks House? Is that like a half a block?
Right.
Darren's old house up there, yeah, from...
It's gotta be up Steve Rose.
Melrose Rose would be, yeah, it would be between Steve Rose and Kings.
Right by King's House.
Yeah, just that one little strip there.
Rose.
Yeah, right by...
It's not that whole street, it's just that west end of it.
It's from west of Melrose, so it's up there.
From Melrose to Marcella Cooks.
Just a little short right there by Steve Roethen.
Yeah.
That's number three, right?
Yeah. And the reason why it goes one, three, four, five, seven is because on this sheet over here, number two, and I didn't copy this for you guys, but number two is in front of Gary Faber's house. He's got milling out two inches and putting two inches of hot mix back in. He doesn't think that would work to seal coat that one. He would rather...
Where's that at?
In front of Gary Faber's there.
Faber's, they took that speed bump out.
Oh, yeah.
That always breaks up too.
Yeah, that's kind of a bad spot.
Well, he milled it off and I kinda didn't see a lot of it.
We need a speed bump there, don't we?
We're gonna use a lot of speed bumps, Ray.
Sure, that bump in.
Somebody told me last night they just like to see a few speed bumps.
So the, the number three, that's your street, Gerald?
Yep.
No, it's Second Avenue. Not my street. You know what I meant.
Yeah, if it's anybody's, it's Don's.
Do you add these up? What's total of all these?
Oh, four and five, aren't they the same place?
Well, that's what it looks like. Four goes halfway and, and five goes...
Oh, no, it goes west, I guess.
Yeah, one goes west and one goes up the highway, 36 east.
Which would be M64.
I think that was for...
No, that's number... That's a different one.
Is that Main or is that Center?
That's not on.
Center streets up the highway, huh?
Yeah, tha- that's by the bank there, right.
That's five. And seven would be Main.
Two blocks.
First and third on Main.
Four, four starts by Richard Ulrich's house and goes to Main Street. Five goes from Main Street all the way up to the Country Store Corner.
That's Main Street.
What, number seven?
Yeah. It's downtown, basically.
What this guy did was just kinda drive around and see, you know, see what he thought was...
The bad spots.
Needed, well, Rick went with him. What day was it, Rick? Him and Rick talked about it and he came back again and...
Must've been the 3rd of August.
Yeah.
They must've been the 3rd of August, that's the date on this.
Went to the east side of town?
Huh?
Went to the east side of town?
He went to the east side of town. They did that years ago.
They didn't do that, did they?
Yeah. He was curious about, you know, who's... He talked about that.
Does he think it's time to do it again?
Steve asked if, uh, when he could be here to do this and I asked him that question. He said he thought he could get it done in September. If we wanted to do anything. Now, if you look on the front page of this, guys, there's a cost for just seal coating is a dollar ninety-five a square yard. He's got all the square yards written down, so.
If we raise that, uh, storm sewer up there by the bank? Bank? Then that's not in here either, though. It's gotta be raised up too.
Yeah, that's not in here, no, you're right. Yeah, the one that's four inches below the street now.
That should be raised up, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I talked to him about that.
Questions, counsel?
He gave me some names of some people to talk to. Jared in Idagrove and Jim in Cherokee. And I didn't get the chance to talk to him, but I can if you want me to.
How long does this bid go for?
Didn't ask him that.
Because you wouldn't wanna do anything before Farm Festival?
No, you can't do anything before Farm Festival, I wouldn't think.
Are we gonna, no, this kind of, the back, of course, for the cart, but it's... Don't we need to get, well, just one bid?
Depends on how much we stand.
Yeah.
I've got a number at the house.
Question is, where are you gonna get a second bid?
I've got a number at the house. I got a, uh, for when we wanna, I got a bid for, to re-blacktop the, uh, school playground and it's from a different company than this. So I've got...
So we could send them to square footage, maybe?
I do have another number.
I think Ford Dodge Asphalt did this too. Maybe they've, maybe they've blacktopped one, but I don't, I don't know. At one time Ford Dodge did some stuff here in town.
But this guy was affiliated, I got his number through Hallett, through, uh, May Trader.
Yeah, that's the green...
I'll try and get you that number tomorrow, Chris. So should we table this until we get a second bid, counsel? Well, you're gonna perform the same type of... Well, you gotta, you gotta compare apples to apples, so...
Yeah.
So whoever we give the opportunity, we have to tell them, this is, you have to compare the same thing. We can't give them the prices, of course, but...
No, I asked the guy if anybody else does this and he said no, but he's gonna say no, you know, so.
If we wanna do the pea gravel? We used to do that.
See, that's the Red Rock, isn't it?
Yes. And he said that it's, well, he called it granite. He said that's why it lasts so long, cuz it's so much harder than the P rock.
I can get you that other number. You can call him and see what you come up with. I've got his name and number and all the credentials at home.
We do have about $78,000 worth of spending here.
On this fr- front sheet here, Rob?
Does that include the seal coat, Rob?
Yeah, these dark numbers, he had them up there somewhere, $78,000. I was rounding them up.
Do we need to do all of those?
Yeah, but...
Well, you know, this guy suggested do a couple streets this year, a couple streets next year, a couple streets the next year and...
What is in our rocks?
105.
So we've got some room?
Oh, and he told me too that anything they do that day, you can drive on that night.
Oh, man.
Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna give Chris that other phone number. He can call this guy. So we're gonna table this right now, so Chris can get some further information for us.
I think the other thing we need to do is go on each survey, all these areas and see if they're...
Which ones we actually...
Want done?
Which ones can hold off till next year, which one we can do, that need to do this year.
You wanna write with him, Rick? Write with, uh, Chris and see what you think and...
I already looked at one. There are a lot of, one up there, one's on the bank, it'd be the worst, and then here...
Huh? Second Avenue.
Gary's isn't on here, is it?
No. It's on this, it's on this other, this other sheet that I've got here.
What was number six then?
Number six is...
How much does number two cost?
Number two, $6,000. $6,421.
But you didn't, you didn't really feel very good about it. You were giving it at that level.
No, what was number six then?
First to center. Oh, that's, uh...
Tower Street.
Yeah. The, by the fire station?
No, actually it'd be...
By the fire station, right?
Yeah, it could be either one.
70 feet by 30 feet.
That's the corner.
That's the fire station corner.
$15,178. That's number six.
Oh, that's county, that's right, you're right. County, state let it go.
Yeah, but it's still county. I asked about that and I think...
Outside of that, so.
178. 15, 178.
Okay, we're gonna move on to clerk's report. Chris?
Ray, I checked on your question and, uh, John's gonna have to help me a little bit with this, but what happens is your question was, why are these funds all the beginning balances and not the ending balances? And the way our system is set up, we have to go in there once a year and make an adjustment. It doesn't...
We got the same numbers as this month, cuz we got...
No. Here, yeah, but not in, not in everything. If you look at the second page, Ray asked the question, why are, um, the detail account columns, why are they the beginning balances and not the ending balances? So I went in and looked, I asked, I called our, the lady that I call and she said that our system is set up where it doesn't, this doesn't calculate. It doesn't roll and calculate. We have to go in and make an adjustment to change.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I like this right here.
Turn this up.
Road use fund, where is it? Road use balance, 28, 137 on page two. And if you look at road use, that's the beginning balance. Not the ending balance. You have 105 in there instead of 28. So why does this come up as 28 if it's 105, that's where it's concerned? This page tells us absolutely nothing except our beginning, beginning balance.
Right.
Second page. Page two means nothing.
And this one.
Yeah, they're all that way.
It doesn't tell us the ending balance, it just tells us the beginning balance.
Well, the one oh five, three forty, fifty-eight's the ending balance.
That's our ending balance.
Oh, you can't, um, you get, you got your annual activity, it's seventy-seven thousand, two oh three. That's your annual, income less expenses. And then your beginning balance is the fund balance you're carrying forward from previous years. That's accumulation all the years up until July one, two thousand ten. So that's where you ended last year. So that's your beginning this year. And then that plus your net activity gives you your ending balance of the year. And that's a, you have, that's the right number. This is the balance sheet. So it's taken, if I can make this a little clearer, all these beginning balances that are showing up on that balance sheet are those, each individual fund balance is carried forward. That's your carry forward fund balance from the previous fiscal year. Or all the previous fiscal years. That profit and loss on there, that minus ninety-six, nine seventy-six, fourteen, are, if you add up all the net incomes for all the programs, they'll add up to that ninety-six, nine sixty-seven, fourteen. What, what we tried to do on the income statement is to add on the previous year's balance, so we can tell every month on an ongoing basis what our total fund balance is. If you didn't have that on there, you would only see the current year stuff. So we've taken all the accumulation of the prior year. Look at that general fund. We carried over on the general fund, twenty-three thousand, three twenty-one, be the page before the road use. Click the bottom of page four. Kind of a long, a long page there. So, page four of the general fund has got all the accumulation of all the activities and we have a negative twenty-two, seven nineteen. And then from the previous year, when we closed our books at the end, June thirtieth, two thousand ten, we ended up with twenty-three, three twenty-one. So if we did carry that twenty-three forward, it would look like we lost twenty-two thousand. But actually, we got six hundred and two thousand of general fund carryover to the next fiscal year. And what we'll do then is that six oh one ninety-one will add to that... I'm sorry, not the six...
Shouldn't just be the balance for next year.
Yeah, the negative two, two, seven nineteen, twenty-six in the general fund, we, we didn't hold, will offset that twenty-three, three twenty-one, seventeen in a journal entry, which will bring it to the six oh one ninety-one. And then next year, you'll find that six oh one ninety-one in that beginning balance, 'cause that's our cumulative carryforward and all the activity for the year, so you know where you're gonna end up at the end of the year. 'Cause if it, like, road use, we're at a hundred and five, it'd be a little deceptive. We only had the seventy-seven and didn't show how much we carried over. And that, that's really not, the beginning balance is like a carryover amount from the previous fiscal year. When you add your current activity on, it's attracted off whichever way. And kind of for the year, you can kind of tell where your fund balance is going at the end, how much you have to...
Okay, how much, how much is supposed to be in road use?
Hundred and five, three forty.
Yeah.
Then over here, we show as of six thirty, we had a, only twenty-eight thousand or something like that.
That's what he's saying, but, that's what started it.
Started at the beginning.
And that should, that should've been like ten then, shouldn't it? Six thirty-ten?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, not necessarily, Ray, because...
You're absolutely right. It should be six thirty-ten. You're right. That, those balances are six thirty-ten.
Yeah.
And then the cumulative profit and loss is what all the, we, see, we co-mingle all our balances. Though these are trying to un-co-mingle them into, into these balances.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I was looking, that's what really threw me, 'cause if we said...
Actually, this is the balance sheet as of six thirty-eleven though.
Yeah, but these balances are really the end of the year, six thirty-ten.
Sure, but then when you add the current profit and loss in there, on the bottom of the balance sheet, then it does come to six thirty-eleven.
Yeah. And then the funds statements are just kind of show us which each fund is doing. Yeah, how much money do we have in road use? If you didn't have that twenty-eight in there, you'd think you only had seventy-seven. So in the end of the year, we got a hundred and five. And that's why we try to balance out, well, the tip, we balance out to zero, uh, debt service, we try to balance out to zero. So you get some idea. And then when, if you look at electric, um, electric utility, after we did the transfer out of a hundred thousand, we actually used a hundred and three of the utility funds. Well, we had six hundred and sixty-six carryover in electric. So we're really gonna be at five sixty-three at the end of twenty-eleven. So Ray is absolutely right. That number is June thirtieth, twenty-ten. We could actually say beginning on six thirty, twenty-ten on there, or June twenty.
It has to say beginning though.
Yeah.
It adds up, because it adds up, but you still got the bottom line, but...
Yeah, that's today's, yeah, so... Yeah, maybe it could be a little more informative.
That's what drove me a little bit.
Yeah, it is the beginning balance. You're right, absolutely right.
Questions for Chris?
Well, let me explain one more thing. Um, if you guys go back to the general funds that John was just talking about and notice that we're now positive six hundred and one ninety-one, where last meeting we were negative, uh, twenty-four, twenty-eight thousand, I don't remember what it was. Um, what I did was took, our insurance premium is forty-two thousand dollars, basically. So I took, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars of that. I went back and looked through our policy and, uh, tried to get some percentages as to what our electric costs us on our premium and our gas and our water and... So I took, our electric is about fifty percent. So twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars went from the general fund to the electric fund. And if you look at the electric fund and the insurance, it says exactly twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, and then natural gas was ten percent. So I took forty-one eighty-four from the general fund, put it against the gas. Uh, water and sewer were both five percent, so I took two thousand ninety-two dollars and did the same thing. I took it away from the general fund.
Meaning the cost of...
Expenditure.
The expenditure.
And put it to the...
Appropriate fund.
Electric, water, gas and sewer expenses. So it made our general fund expenses come down and all the other funds expenses go up, which in turn makes our general fund go from negative to a positive.
Which it should be.
Well, yeah, I have gathered that the state doesn't like it when we have a negative, right? So...
Questions, John?
No.
Anybody?
John, help me out with that. Thank you, John.
Been moved in second to approve the clerk's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. Building permits, Brody Stein Camp and Terry Stein Camp. Looks like Chris signed off on both.
Both on building deck?
Both of them.
One of his house?
No. Between the garage and the house.
North side.
Side.
Be the north side, whatever that is.
Drive by, drive by his house. You can see it. He bought this from a place in Chiron, I think. I think he said that, Chiron. And it's already put together. He just picks it up and he's gonna put it, install it in between his house and garage.
We approve the building permits.
Been moved in second to approve Brody Stein Camp and Terry Stein Camp's building permits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carried. Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening.
You're up, buddy.
Well, like, uh, Melody tried to come in and mention that, uh, to come and, and maybe try to have me to keep the update on the city website. And I said, yeah, I'd be willing to look into it. I've never done anything like that, but I've always been easy to learn on things like that, as long as I can talk to somebody and, um, so that's, I guess, I came to talk to Chris, what was that Tuesday, Chris?
Yeah, last Tuesday.
And we talked a little bit there. And I've been on it a couple times, looked at it and, you know, I never, um, got the code to get in on it to, you know, just kind of see the different options.
To be able to work on it.
Yeah, but I just kind of got on there and just, you know, checked it out, but, uh, like Chris and I said, yeah, it is, it does need some updating, you know, and, and, and like Chris and I talked, we don't have a clue what, you know, how many hours be, whether it be, you know, two hours a week, you know? Or what, who knows? But I guess that's the, the main thing that everybody kind of came to me and, and I'm gonna look at it and if it works for you guys and, and see once what, what will kind of work from there, I guess.
What Wayne and I kind of talked about was that first, you know, it may be more hours, you know, getting everything updated.
Cut up the speed.
Uh, 'cause, you know, some of that stuff is from two thousand eight, nine. Lot of it is, actually.
And there might be time where I don't do anything on it, you know, 'cause it, you know, where nothing might not change, you know, it just, it's one of those things where it might be, might be some hours, you know, that's what Chris and I said, we, you don't know, you know, until you get it up and really start looking at it, you know?
For the first couple of weeks, it'll probably be, you know, ten, twenty hours a week, but then...
Call around and get, make sure everything's on there like it's supposed to be, yeah.
After that, it probably wouldn't be a lot of hours.
Yeah.
Then we also have to make contact with all the organizations in town and have them, have a person that would contact you with their entity.
Well, I think that would be another thing, you know, that Wayne can do.
It'd be as good as the information you ever see.
Is it, is, you know, if you didn't have anything to update, say you hadn't talked to Rob for a month, you know, call Rob up and say, you know, what has changed at your store, you know? What do you want to update on your, and if there's nothing, then there would be nothing, but...
Lakeview updates theirs once a month. I get a, uh, email from them once a month on what Lakeview has to offer and what's going on over there and, and what have you, so, um, I think it's gonna be quite extensive, so...
We, we also talked today, uh, we had an economic development meeting and, and we talked to a couple of ladies from over in Lakeview and, um, they talked about, uh, getting on Facebook and Twitter and, you know, I don't know anything about that stuff. But they said that's a big deal. People use it all the time and it's easy for them. Easier for them to do that than it is to update their website. So we thought maybe that would be a way that Wayne could go to.
You know, the web design people, what's the company that you're working with?
Did our website? Robert Schunerman.
Could he use, uh, you know, what the underlying program is he used to do the web design?
I think he would. Oh, God.
I don't, but yeah, I know he will. I've talked to him already and, and he said that he would call Wayne and work with him on it. All he wants is an okay from the city to do that.
Looking at it, like I said, after he show you once, I think it'd be pretty simple. I mean, it's like anything, you know, you, you just gotta get in there and start working with it, you know, and, and that's the biggest thing.
Yeah, it's not, it's not hard. I...
No, 'cause you showed me that, you looked at there, it's just time consuming at first.
I went in there and updated the Farm Festival. I put a few things on there about the Farm Festival and it's, it's not hard to do. Uh, it's a little time consuming, but it's not hard, you know? Push a couple of buttons and...
Did you start typing? Did you talk to Schunerman about the Facebook and the Twitter then?
I haven't talked to Robert. No.
He works for that C...
TGI or CIG?
No, he owns it.
He owns it. I thought he owned it.
He owns that.
And I think he owns that.
I mean, does he get a monthly fee for his?
You know, we paid him a one-time.
Yeah, it was a one-time deal to set up the website and he doesn't do any maintenance or anything like that. He has done a little work on the computers for us. Uh, a month ago, they were acting up and he came in and fixed it. Do you know anything about Facebook and Twitter then?
I'm on Facebook, yeah, but I'm, you know, it's not something I do every day, but I know how to run Facebook, yeah, yeah. But I'm not on Twitter, no. I'm not that much of a guru and sticking around on the computers that way, but, yeah.
I mean, is that a possibility for the council to decide whether to go with a website versus the Facebook and the Twitter? I don't know.
I'm sure you'd probably go on Facebook, but I don't know how, you know, I, I can't answer that, how, how well be versus just having a website. I don't have a clue on that part, you know? I'm sure people would.
School and council, you could do it.
You know?
That's Reese.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, those little kids, I mean, yeah, my kids are better at it than I am. I mean, they're not scared of it. That's the whole thing. They just sit over there and...
Kind of a fall from them.
Yeah, but, you know, I guess I, I'd be the wrong one to ask if it'd be better to go, you know, on Facebook or not. You know, Steve, to be honest, but, yeah.
I'm gonna have, uh, I think I got a meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna ask Scott Peterson, who does his? And if they are on Facebook and Twitter, I'll ask him about that and see what he says.
I think, I think Scott updates it. And I know they're, I know they're on Facebook and I know they're on Twitter, but I heard that Twitter doesn't, Twitter doesn't do much. I mean...
If you want information, really, the, we got...
The main, the main thing is probably the website. I mean, that's what most of the people are doing.
Basically, look at it and, yeah, people like it or not, you know, Facebook, it is on Facebook, you know, for towns like that, so it's not a real... Not as good as your weather and I went, but, yeah. That's my...
I mean, they'll Google all ages, what they'll do.
See what he says.
Yeah.
That's basically the way most people figure out what's going on in town. They just Google all age.
Have you got a price set in mind, what you would charge us or anything, Wayne?
Like I told Chris, I had no clue. Like I said, I'd just be willing to come and help, you know, work out that way, whatever you guys think. 'Cause I wouldn't have a clue what it's, what it's worth neither. You know, it just, it basically get me out of the house, put it that way. Like Chris and I talked, you know, and...
Time's gotta be worth something.
Well, yeah, but that's, I said, whatever you guys think, you know, and, uh, I'm, I'm easygoing that way, put it that way, so... 'Cause like I said, it's not gonna be a lot of, you know, once, after you get it up and going, I don't think it, you know, don't think it's gonna be a lot of hours, you know, but...
I would, I would think that it might, might even be five hours a week once you get it going, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not gonna be a lot of hours.
Two days, a couple hours a day, I think would be about as much as you could really spend on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on like, how much your updates.
Well, and you know, the Farm Festival would probably be a little more time consuming during this time of year because you'd have more updates and, uh, maybe some other times, start of school, you know, there's a lot of stuff that you gotta put in there for that and...
Okay. It's gonna be a hit and miss, what's gonna be, you know, it's...
And has he got a fundraiser or a dance?
Right.
Something like that, if you wanna put that on?
Uh, why don't we see what we can come up with, Wayne, and, uh, maybe we can put it on next month, our next meeting's agenda and we'll, uh, get together again and maybe we can proceed from there?
I said, yeah, like I said, just mentioned it and I said, yeah, I'm gonna look at something, you know, and, yeah, if it works out for you guys, fine. If it doesn't, you know, it'll heartbreak for me, you know, put it that way, but...
Yeah, that's basically what we're asking.
We just hired Tony for nine bucks an hour.
Yeah.
I don't have time.
You wanna proceed, Rob, with something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying we just hired Tony for nine dollars an hour. Think that would be a good starting wage.
Yeah, like I said, whatever. I'm not picky, put it that way.
Well, I entertain a motion if you wanna hire him to, uh...
How's that gonna?
Been a motion to, uh...
Did you make that motion?
I made that one. Hours to be determined by Chris, Rob.
Been a motion to, uh, approve Wayne Nissen for the updating of the website at a cost of nine dollars per hour. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Welcome to the city of Wallack, Wayne.
Welcome aboard, Wayne.
Now, one thing is, Chris, did you see once with the, want, come down here and work on that computer, or did you want me to try to do that?
We can't, we do have the internet on that computer back there, Wayne. If that's, I mean, in the winter time, obviously, you probably have to work from home, but...
Unless I had, had my vehicle, like I said, I'm trying to work on a vehicle, that'd be the only thing, you know, then, 'cause at least it'd get me out of the house, you know? 'Cause that's the big thing, otherwise there's nothing to do. I just sit there at home, you know, and...
Sure.
Yeah.
If he come down, by, by winter time, you'll have it figured out.
Oh, yeah.
You'll be able to do it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so. And that way, if I had a vehicle, then I could just still make it down here, you know, during the week, but that would be, you know, kind of weather too, but, yeah.
Okay.
Well, hopefully Chris and I can get together. We can get you, uh, names of, uh, who to contact, you know, to update the website.
Well, pretty much that should, like, he told me that Robert, you know, and once that and everything should be on the website to kind of get the phone numbers, who to call, you know, and kind of go from there, so, that's what's our plan for there.
I think we should get a list of the city organized, organization... I think we should get a list of the city organizations, organizations in the city and have them all list Wayne to contact person. It's easier to talk to one than it is to talk to all of them.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Don Fitzgerald, closed alley behind shop.
Yeah, I called Don Friday afternoon after this was done and he doesn't need to do that, so cross that baby off.
Can we do it?
No, he, the way I understand it is he's gonna make a great big tank and he, he can't haul it from here to Sioux City, so he's gonna make it in Sioux City, so he doesn't need our, closing of our alley.
How are we gonna be using that spot?
For.
I'm sure.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
He's, uh, from what I've heard, I've, I've never actually heard this from him, but I've heard this from a couple of other people. He's very happy that he came to Wallack.
He actually said he wanted to put a fence around it and he said, you can't do that. This is volleyball court. Okay, I won't. Once a year, that's a volleyball court.
Mowing of our very good hay, Randy?
Uh, I think we just probably take the city guys up there with the mow, uh, belly mower, whatever mower we got, should save that in the tractor, just mow it.
Well, the reason this is on here is because, uh, Rick talked to, um, Glenn Dederman one day and Glenn said that he would be happy to mow it for us and actually pay for the hay if it's worth anything. He said that since we cut it so early the first time, that it's probably not gonna be very good, but, you know, there's, I mean, we kind of planted it to have a.
Randy?
I'd say laymore.
Profit off of it.
I, I haven't, I haven't talked to Randy or whoever about it, but I haven't mentioned my and dad too, that I could give them a call and see if they wanted it. But if Web has first bid, I mean, glad to take.
Well, I mean, that's something that we'd have to figure out is, you know, I'm, I'm sure that there's other people that probably would, probably would wanna do the same thing.
I just don't see paying somebody to mow something that you can, that's got market value to it.
No, no.
Well, now we're not making it as a market value, just, my guys weeds. Next year, we should have a better chance.
Could that, that help establish?
Francis says it's not much of a market value too, it's mostly weeds.
Yeah, hopefully.
Glenn would mow it for nothing, Bill. He asked me how to mow it, they ain't mow, or Bill, I didn't even know they meant mow it, actually.
I was gonna swing through it at the Sicklemower, come back and run the Rarins, look at her place and do it, but I had trouble, technical trouble, I had more trouble, so I never got it done.
So I guess that's just on here to, to, uh, give you guys a heads up.
Does it mow?
Oh, yeah.
Does it?
I'd say we should leave this up to Chris to get it.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
He goes to Chris.
Get somebody to mow it. If our guys don't have to do it, it's great.
If you're going to mow the bale, I don't want to mow the bale.
If they wanna split it, I don't care, you know, I don't care what they do.
Living.
Don't turn down money if it's lacking.
Yeah. I won't. Okay, re precinct, precincting, re precincting, um.
They actually kind of.
Yeah. The, every, every ten years when the census comes through, there's a possibility to have re precincting done. And Dean Stock called me and wanted me to talk to you guys about it, uh, in two thousand ten, they went from twenty-one precincts down to nine precincts. I think there's one in each town in the county. That sounds, okay. Um, he said that there's a possibility to go from nine to three. That'd be Odie Bolt, SAC and Lakeview. Now, he's pretty sure that they're gonna get some pushback from this, so.
She up together.
Uh, yeah, I mean, and, you know, he does, he doesn't necessarily think that we have to do it, but there's, there'll be a cost savings when, when our machines need to be updated, then we wouldn't have to spend that money on buying another machine, and he couldn't tell me what the cost savings was gonna be exactly.
For any voting, any of that to go to Odie Bolt from there?
Well.
Or like, do you?
Well, you know, nothing's set in stone. I mean, they're not going from nine to three, they're not going from nine to four, they're not going from, you know, they, they may go from nine to five, they may go from nine to six, they don't know yet. They kind of wanted to get a little feedback from you guys and see what you think.
Gonna be for everything, school board, everything?
No.
No.
No, I mean, just for elections more or less.
I can remember there's two here in Wallack.
National state.
Why wouldn't it be for school board too?
Well, there, there would be voting places, but it just wouldn't be one as a matter of Shaler, what our school board does.
Yeah. That would still have to be in.
This was, had to do with where you voted.
It does.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but when you do.
You'd have to go to Lakeview to vote no matter what.
When you do a school board, you have to stay in the school district.
So it's a different election than?
Right, so if, if Shaler has a school board election, they can't come to Lakeview to vote.
So how does that work if you have a city election?
That'd be the same, that'd be the same way.
So we have to go to Lakeview and vote.
And probably be done here.
I think that would be done here, just wouldn't be done on a machine.
So it'll be hand tabulated.
Yeah. I didn't ask all those questions, but.
Basically, state and federal.
Dean, Dean knew, uh, he said before that.
And county.
That he knew that we would not want to give up our.
Precinct.
Precinct, I mean.
Well, it does make it a hardship for a lot of people.
Right.
Especially the elderly.
Yeah, sure.
A lot of elderly people.
They're the only ones that vote.
What, let's give Chris kind of a consensus then, the council feels that we don't wanna give our precinct up, correct?
I would, uh, I don't know, I wouldn't mind going to six if they divided the county into six, cause I think whoever will precinct that.
I think we would too.
Yeah.
Well, who would you knock out early?
Y'all, or, uh.
Well, you'd have like.
Early and Shaler.
You'd have like Wallack, Odie Bolt and Shaler, cause Shaler's so far up there. You'd have Early, Wallack and.
Nemaha would go away.
Well, they would be the north.
Wallack, Odie Bolt and Shaler, and then you'd have.
Nemaha would be the south center, you'd have Lakeview and then be the.
SAC.
East, southeast, you'd even have a northeast which would be SAC.
Nemaha would go away, Litten would go away.
Cause, you know, you gotta get Auburn to somewhere.
That would be the.
Auburn's about as close to Wallack as it is to Lakeview, so.
That would be the three that would go away, be Nemaha, Litten and Auburn. If you go down, drop to six.
Litten and Nemaha for sure.
Yeah.
And yeah, probably Auburn.
You have to go to Auburn.
Yeah.
Be some screamers.
Oh, that'd be.
Well, that's your consensus. As far as that goes, you can report back to Dean, Chris.
We'd like to keep our precinct.
Hey, get nice, I wouldn't mind going to six because I think we'll still have one here.
Street dance pool fundraiser.
I'd like to ask a question, how much money do we still have to raise?
Well, right now, uh, and I don't know what it's gonna cost to tear it down yet, but right now, we're at a hundred and five thousand dollars for the building. That includes Jamie's bid, um, the.
Engineer.
Engineer, the asbestos mitigation and stuff. Um, and we have sixty-four thousand in the bank. Hopefully, the TIF gave us some money today.
We did. Well, we, we can't give you the money till you do the project.
Okay.
But it.
But at least, yeah, it's there. So now we have seventy-four thousand, so we're, and we're thinking that the teardown's gonna cost somewhere around five, six thousand, I don't know, I mean, so we could be a hundred and ten thousand, we could be forty thousand dollars short.
Forty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five to, thirty-five to forty. Now.
Seventy-five and forty-five.
We still haven't had our.
Here's what I wanna do, uh, this is my idea with the community club is, uh, that I would, Jamery Foods would donate burgers, chips and buns and, uh, the community center would donate pop and the community club would take care of the advertising and at our September community club meeting, we'd just have a deal where you come eat burgers and give us a check.
And, you know, we, by that time, actually by Wednesday night, I wanna be able to say, this is what the building's gonna cost, this is what we have to raise, you know, if it's thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars, I wanna be able to say, we need that much money. Seems like it's easier to ask somebody for money when you say, you know, I need.
And I mean, like we did with the, with the survey door to door, where we knock on the door and hand them a flyer and say, this is going to happen on September twelfth, we would like you to come up and eat burgers and, uh, if you care to contribute ten dollars, if you care to contribute a hundred dollars, if you care to contribute a thousand dollars, please come, you know.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a great idea. I mean, that way we get everybody.
All this organization of, uh, you know, anything where we're gonna give away prizes, we're gonna give away, you know, that, businesses get tired of you knocking on their door.
Yeah.
I think this is a simple way to do it. I think that at the end of the night, if we keep a running total on at the end of the night, we'll know what we need, what we have left to do. We make this finish it off, you know.
That would be nice.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think a street dance is gonna be much of a fundraiser.
Well, what Robin wanted to do, Robin came to me and asked me to put this on here and the, the guards would like to have a street dance for teens.
For what?
Teens.
Teens, not teens.
I just don't think there's any money in it. Plus, what you get in the school year, teens won't make it, the school owns you every night.
Yeah.
See them parks for the pool.
And find that they, they're already going three different directions and they won't make it.
Want you to check with Robin to see when the available dates are open in September for Rob's theory.
Well, he's thinking about September.
Meeting, meeting, is that seven September?
September.
What day is that? There'll be the second Wednesday. Oh, look at here, Ray's got one right in his pen.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Well, what's that, second Wednesday, fourteenth?
Yeah, second.
That'd be perfect.
I think that'd be a perfect time to do it.
Then we'll find a way low.
Has church started then yet?
Yeah, school started, yeah, school started.
Oh, sure.
They come before church or they come after church, they can meet at what it.
They might have stopped down.
We start cooking at five.
You know, that might be the best thing. They gotta come to town to drop the kids off.
Yeah.
So come have a burger and stay in town for an hour.
You might wanna advertise a little bit so some real people come in, they utilize it too.
Sure.
Put it on Facebook.
If we could get, uh, you know, address, rural addresses from the fire department, we could.
I'm not friends with all the Wallack people, though, so.
What'd you say, Rob, I didn't hear?
If we could get a list from the fire department of rural addresses, then we could send them a fire.
So the consensus on the pool front, or the street dances, no?
Toast.
I think they did a good job today of the car wash, you know, it seemed like they were, everybody that told me said they were busy over there, then they were theirs.
I stopped down there before this meeting and they said that they had no brakes at all during the day. I don't know how long it takes to wash a vehicle, but.
Right, right, when I went by. Took them about fifteen minutes on mine.
Yeah, you're the mayor.
Yeah.
Had to give you an extra little touch.
Yeah.
Public forum? Yeah, Randy?
Back in oh-two, when the town celebrated, celebrated the hundred twenty-fifth, uh, Dick Fatschauer had reserved the street of Ascot Cooks down to Mark Meister's for displaying old machinery and tractors and stuff. I want to do the same thing, but I, I, every year from now on, if possible.
On a Saturday, doing the Farm Festival, or what are you looking at?
Well, I like, like for the full three days.
Full, full day.
I think that the reason we abandoned the kitty parade is that place was because of the, the one night, Friday night.
Oh, that's right.
But I, I'm not opposed to doing it, you know, it's just that Friday night, we take away those firing places.
That's right.
But I, you know, I think it's a good idea, Randy, yeah.
And I was gonna talk to superintendent about the playground, but there's also a crap and stuff in parking there too, but, but I would talk to the city council first, then the superintendents, and go from there.
Were you gonna enter those? Your brother called me and said about you was gonna enter those into the parade also then?
It would, it would, it would be up to the individuals if they wanted to be in the parade or not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Maybe the best scenario would be that if they were in the parade and then brought it there Saturday afterwards and let it sit there Saturday afternoon.
Okay.
Maybe that'd be, cause they probably wanna take them home at night.
Yeah, or if, if the city council has, uh, a different spot where you, we could have a three day setup, like you'll cook, of course, that's, that's, uh, lumber yards.
Yeah, we knew they wanted to leave them out every night.
Hey, we did here, been back in oh-two.
Yeah, we got different people.
Yeah, this is eleven.
They cut signs down and stuff, yeah.
Anyway.
How many, how many tractors or how many vehicles?
I haven't, I haven't done the advertising or calling, but I thought, I would, I would, we'd approve first before I did any calls and, and I get the word out.
And council, you're gonna have to give him an answer tonight because the Farm Fest is.
Something quick, so.
Yeah.
I would say that this year, we do it on the Saturday and see how it works out.
Okay.
And then next year, we'll, we'll have more time to plan.
Right.
But I, I don't have any problem liking this off on the Saturday.
So it's a Friday night, that, that's the Monday?
Yeah, but on Saturday, if you, you know, they entered the parade and.
They wanna bring it in on.
And then bring it, let it sit there, yeah.
They wanna bring it in the morning, so they pull out there and do the parade and you can.
What's that?
Probably, you know, just to get to the parade and that, you know, and then after the parade, maybe others, sitting out there till the evening when they want to take them home.
Do you have enough, do we have enough stuff to block streets off?
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got the other tape if nothing else.
We have two weeks before the, uh, festival, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, we're gonna, track county tomorrow, be in for next week's track county. Uh, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a short, uh, respite, uh, with, uh, get out, uh, uh.
I guess if we're doing this for Farm Festival, have you talked to Rod and Bill?
No.
Because I think they would do the funding and the advertising if.
You can talk to them.
But I don't know. Do we need to make a motion or anything?
No, you can't do it, you can't do it in the public forum, I'm sorry.
No.
You can't, well, I don't think, do we need a motion?
No, I don't think so.
I think you just go up and get Bill and, and.
Got the Rod.
Rod and Bill's blessing.
You got our blessing with it, yeah.
Okay.
Just to do it on Saturday this year and let's see how it works out, cause actually Sunday's getting to the point where not a lot left.
No.
I'd say it's dimly.
Yeah, go talk to Rod and Bill.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
I got a couple of things for the public forum. Rob, um, I don't know if you wanna know this or not, but the church alley is the church alley. It's not, it's not, uh, Wallack's property. Next thing that I wanna say is, uh, um, I think you guys should all, I think we should all, um, thank Rick for putting the sign up. Rick and all the guys, because they did it last week when it was a hundred degrees and they did a hell of a lot of work. And it looks really nice.
Yes, it does, it's a little good, yeah, thank you.
And, uh, the way they put it in there, I don't think it's coming out.
Careful, don't give them guys any.
I'd rather they knew that they were out there.
So, you know, that's the only thing I got for public forum. Barrel, you're up.
I was gonna say, are we gonna do anything with our five acres that came up at the economic development meeting again and in reference to how many houses we have for sale and rent that.
Yeah, we do need to get that on.
Should. Gotta get that.
Trade or trade, I'll put that on the next meeting.
Probably the next step would be to platter and come up with the plating and survey, so we know what we're gonna do there.
Should I, should I get some, like, maps of it so we can look at it?
Yeah, we, we have a proposal, we just need to.
Somebody to plat.
Well, they wanna hire somebody to plat it and.
You, you have another one.
Yeah, the last one just went out and, uh, I drove around out there and that seems, looked like it would work.
Nine lots in here. That would work good. I love you wanna make a cul-de-sac on the end now?
I think it just.
Dead end it.
Dead end it.
I meant for turning around or whatever, some of the guys, you know, you got people gonna drive out there, so they got to turn around with somebody's.
They wanna drive.
Fire protection.
It'd be like, it'd be like out on the street at the end of Owls.
Yeah.
It's just dead ended there.
Yeah, that just seems to cause problems.
You are, you are right there, Randy. You are right.
I don't know if we have a very, you know, like, you know, to have something.
Well, the only thing, the cul-de-sac, if you're gonna go on further, then you gotta tear it out and whatever too.
Plus a thirty-one foot street signal back up and go again, pretty much make any reason. I, I just thought I'd bring it up 'cause it came up the meeting and.
Yeah, that needs to be done. I thought you were gonna.